You are listening to Lone Star Community Radio on 104.5 KCZW LP Conroe and 106.1 KZCLP Conroe and worldwide on IRloneStar.com.
Gotta turn my microphone up to listen to my boogie woogie Wednesday morning. Good morning Montgomery County, how the heck are you doing? I'm talking to Conroe, downtown Conroe, Splendorous, New Caney, Montgomery, Magnolia, The Woodlands, Tamina, and I gotta say this because it's so funny every now and then people say Tamina, I'm talking to Willis, New Waverly, I'm talking to everybody that can hear me. So I'm talking to the world because there's people that login either through the app, which you can download on Google and iTunes and all that stuff, or people go to IRloneStar.com. So it's cool. So I can say I have a worldwide listening off audience. Okay.
And don't forget the podcast.
That's kind of a stretch saying that, but I like that, right? It's kinda good. Well, we're gonna get to that because then it's on podcast. It's on podcast now, it's on podcast later, it's on YouTube video and things of that nature. So it's just awesome. Folks, good morning, Wednesday morning. As usual, I talked for a few minutes about what's going on, what I've been doing, what's going on in the community, and then we'll have our very special guest on in a little bit. You guys know him, City Councilman Dwayne Ham, he'll be here in a minute, we'll get him on. But what's going on folks? It's a beautiful day, it's Wednesday, birds are singing, wind is blowing, it's a cold front, and for the next couple of minutes I have a special co-host, I've always wanted to have him, I have Mr. Dick Schissler, General Manager of Lone Star Community Radio. What's up dude?
All right, I'm grateful for Jake to be here.
Yeah, Jake the intern.
That's what I'm grateful for.
You know, a lot of people have Jake from State Farm, we have Jake the intern from Lone Star.
Well, he's Jake from Sports Talk. Hopefully he's gonna go live next Wednesday, I believe, at 2 o'clock, if I'm right about that Jake?
1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, Sports Talk, Sports Talk here in the Conroe, Montgomery County area, Jake from Sports Talk.
That's awesome.
He's starting his own show, so.
Well, I'll hear more about that and folks, we'll promote that to you some more because we've always told you there's a whole lot of shows here to talk about, but what I want to talk about right now is you'll see me posting a lot about the open house tomorrow night.
Yeah, we do have an open house tomorrow night.
And so, kind of a what?
Kind of the next step.
Yep, yep. So that's what a little bit today about, and then my guest tomorrow, big time, Victoria Ensley, Communications Coordinator for the City of Conroe. This has been her baby for four years, between the radio, between the TV.
Yeah, RC TV Channel 12 on Suddenlink, and it's also, I believe, an app on Roku. Lone Star Community Radio programs will be seen on it, so if you're a TV person, make sure to add that to your favorites, that's Channel 12 on Suddenlink, if you have a Suddenlink provider, or you can go online, type in RC TV and look up Conroe or City of Conroe, and you have a live stream.
Yep.
One of my favorite pastimes is watching Dwayne. You can actually watch the city council meetings, I believe it's live too, and it's recorded.
It's live, well, and recorded, yeah.
So I kinda want him to do a mashup. I was trying to ask Victoria if I can get the physical copy of the videos and so I can make one of those internet mashup videos of Dwayne saying stuff, like singing a song or something like that, because it is possible.
I'm gonna let you do that, and then I'll share it, so I can only get trouble for sharing it.
I'll post a video as Nathan Arazot Tier or something like that, people get real confused. But yeah, you can check it out folks, it's really, it's a really great opportunity to get involved with your community without leaving your house, even though you should leave your house and get involved. But if you want to be informed of what the City of Conroe is doing for you, that's a great way to do it.
And folks, here's another thing, today is Wednesday, there's a lot going on Friday. Go to Montgomery County Lifestyle Facebook page, you can see some of the events that I've posted, but the one that I'm gonna try to be at, and, because it's here, it's local, it's downtown Conroe, it's over by City Hall, over by the Tax Assessor Office, our Veterans' Memorial Park.
Yep.
9 o'clock to 10 o'clock is a observance for Memorial Day. Not a lot of popping circumstance, there's gonna be a speaker, there's gonna be, you know, some music, some things going on. But let's remember, this is a Nathan plug, okay? Let's remember something, something that drives me insane. Memorial Day is about remembering those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice and for their loved ones, okay? So yeah, that's great to honor our veterans and our active duty military every day, but this is about those who are gone, this is about those who have paid the price. This is about a memory, this is about those who, who, who have gone before us so that we can be here now. Veterans' Day is a great day to honor those veterans who are alive, the active military who are doing it now, and their families who are sacrificing. So it's just a little pet peeve that I see sometimes people cross over and, 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 and just don't understand. And, and I say that because I actually was speaking with two friends of mine who are active, and their spouses yesterday, and they're like, God, we just wish people knew the difference. We don't need to be said, told anything to on Memorial Day, it's about those that are dead and their families. And we don't know how to tell people, we don't want to offend anybody. So I said, I'll see what I can do, I'll touch three people tomorrow and see what I can do.
Well, one thing I want to encourage people listening, if you had a family member who has fallen during that time, usually, they usually give you a flag. And I know I have my grandfather's flag, and my dad has my other grandfather's flag. A lot of people don't put those on display, and I think it's kind of, you're missing out, letting people know that you had a descendant that fought for the country. So I encourage you, if you do know somebody or you yourself have that flag, put it in a case, put it up on the wall, put it somewhere that's meaningful to you to show people. So, because a lot of people don't know what to do with those flags.
And people want to give you love and support, people want to honor you, people want to honor that memory. So, all right folks, here's what we're gonna do, is one more thing I want to tell you about is fearless boxing, go to Montgomery County Lifestyle page, you'll see where I've, I've posted that out there. June 24th, we got a boxing match coming up out at Kawaye Campgrounds. I will be the ring announcer again, James Roy Reyna is coming out of amateur retirement, he's gonna fight, he's 50, golly, 51 years old, he hadn't fought in 24 years, he's coming out, we'll let you have more about that. However, we're gonna take our quick break, and when we come back.
Well, one second, sorry Nathan, I know this is your show, but I do want to remind people the open house is tomorrow, at, from 5 to 7, here at the studio and at Conroe Coffee. So come out, support Community Radio, support Conroe Coffee, and especially what we're gonna be doing in the future for this county and the City of Conroe. So I want all people to know that before, because I had to go.
Okay, he's gotta go, we're gonna announce that again later because we planned on it anyway, but that's great that Dick did it because, one thing while Dick is on the air, this is Dick's studio, this has been his blood, sweat and tears since day one. Dick doesn't live in a mansion, Dick doesn't drive a Ferrari, this isn't a big huge, you know, KRBE radio station where he makes 200,000 a year, I bet he makes about like a tenth of that. So support this radio station, not just because of Dick and the sweat and tears that other people have put into it and the other shows, but because it's community and he had the dream and the rest of us are pegging back on it.
Well, the way I see it Nathan, if we're making money, that means the people like the content. So if you like the content, support the radio, if you don't like the content, let me know, and I'll do something about it, because this is community radio, we're about for the communities, so I encourage y'all to get involved with the radio station, even if it's bad or good, I like to hear everyone's opinion, especially develop a platform for this community, so.
Cool. All right folks, we're gonna take our quick break, when we come back, City Councilman Dwayne Ham, we got a whole lot of stuff to talk about.
Don't forget to download the Lone Star Community Radio app from your Google Play or Apple Store. Bring Montgomery County's Community Radio with you anywhere with your smartphone or tablet. If you are in the Conroe area, tune in on FM, that's Conroe's FM 104.5 106.1. If you are on the computer, bookmark IRloneStar.com as your internet radio station. Lone Star Community Radio, broadcasting 24/7 from the heart of downtown Conroe, Texas.
Dwayne is dancing, I know you can't see it now, we're not gonna put that up on YouTube because, you know, he's a city councilman and he's allowed to dance, he's allowed to be a person, but, you know, it's kinda early in the morning, somebody may, somebody, you know what, somebody will detract from that, they'll take that, Photoshop it, they'll put dancing girls around him or something, so yeah, we're just gonna leave that alone, that's my boogie woogie. So folks, we're back in the studio, let's dive right in. City Councilman Dwayne Ham, how you doing dude?
I'm good, good morning man, how are you doing?
I'm doing great, doing great. So it's a beautiful day, and it's a great day to talk about stuff, and so that's the way I promoted this event, to be lighthearted and silly, because I know that, that some of it can, cannot be silly, can, can be pretty hardcore, but I wanted to bring a lot of people in. So I promoted you, we have a lot of stuff to talk about, is that good?
You bet, you bet.
Okay. Hey man, there's probably some first time listeners and stuff that maybe don't know a lot about you, give us a quick rundown, where are you from, who you are, what makes you tick, and then we'll dive into the city council stuff.
Well, good morning everybody, my name's Dwayne Ham, and I'm your Conroe City Councilman Place One. I, I'm a longtime businessman and a resident of Montgomery County now for a little over 25 years, I think. Time flies, so, but I'm here fighting for the people, that's the reason I got involved in this. But I'm a businessman, so I looked at everything from a business standpoint.
So, how, okay, so 25 years in Montgomery County?
Sure.
You said or so, okay. And so what, what makes you tick on the political side? Because I know you've been very involved in politics for a while, give us a little background on that, from, from whatever made you decide to get involved, whether it was holding up somebody's sign, whether it was the first time you went to vote, or whether it was, you know, tea party, what? Tell us about that.
Sure. I just got tired, you know, I was, I'd always watch the news, always tried to stay informed, and I just got tired of talking to my television, you know, it doesn't talk back, and it just, you know, you just sit there and scratch your head going, why are they making decisions like this in Washington? Why are they making decisions like this local? They don't make good business sense. And so, for me, everything revolves around good business sense. And in politics, I think if you look at it from a business standpoint, we won't make some of the decisions we make. People need to realize lobbyists are like just ruining a lot of things, but they're also doing a lot of good. It's, it, it's a double edged sword. So I just figured if I was gonna continue to complain, then I needed to get involved, and so be part of the solution, not part of the problem by doing nothing.
So with that comes some ups and downs.
Absolutely.
You haven't been picked on by anybody, have you?
Absolutely I have, you know, that happens.
So look, I'm not gonna make you get into the, because I, that's one thing folks, is you're listening, we don't play gotchas. I don't ever want to bring something up that's, you know, hardcore, something that hurts. Now, I don't want to, you know, candy coat anything.
Sure.
But at the same time, it's not about me trying to get across my agenda, it's about the guest. So with that, tell me some highs and lows, tell me some, some goods and bads, what are some things that you, you really love about being this involved? And you, you decide the detail, but what are some things that just like get under your skin, that just frustrate you?
Here's a good one, I mean, and I don't mean to toot my horn, but I ran my campaign on, on, on fighting these high water bills of the citizens, I mean, we have veterans and, and, and people on, on fixed incomes that can't pay their water bills, I said that I'm gonna go after those people that, that are driving the cost of water up, and they, they talk about it being conserving water. It has zero to do with conserving water. These people sit around and pray for a drought, how bad is that? Then they come tell you, we're in a drought, we're running out of water. Well, we're not running out of water folks, and I'm gonna fight every day of my life to make sure that your private property rights are protected, and that's what they're trying to strip away from us a little bit at a time. And that's what these politicians do, they strip a little bit of your freedom away, they strip a little bit of your private property rights. And I said I'm not gonna do it. House Bill 1882, State Representative Will Metcalf, along with Senator Brandon Creighton, all of our state reps, I'm sorry, Senator Nichols, Cecil Bell, Mark Keough, all of these people were involved in, in, in passing a bill that protected the private property rights of people in Montgomery County, and the whole state is watching. And we, we never backed up on that. And so I, I spent some time in Wa, in Austin this year and caught a little blowback for it. But I gotta tell you, I'm proud of it, I'm proud of all of our state reps and our, and our senators, because we got it done. Lone Star Groundwater District is now gonna move in 2018 to an elected board, which means the folks in Montgomery County have a voice. Before then, we didn't have a voice, we just had to take it on the chin. And so those are good things, and those are good reasons why I got involved in politics, to make sure that the citizens are, are represented, not special interests.
And that's great, I love that. I love that we're gonna go to an elected board, we have a say, but here's what just, and then, God, I don't want to be like, you know, the sky is falling, but then we'll have anywhere from 10 to 13, 14, 15, 16% people actually get out and vote. That's something that, we'll talk about that another time, but we gotta motivate people to get involved. Folks, getting involved doesn't mean you have to go to every fundraiser, you don't have to go to any. Getting involved doesn't mean you have to go to every forum, technically you don't have to go to any, but read the newspaper and then go read, you know, another paper, and then go, go, go read that person's Facebook page, and go read that person's dot com page, and, and, and then if you can, go to at least one or two forums and get to know people, but you gotta get involved to make a decision and vote, right?
Oh, that's a lot of.
Otherwise, we're gonna steer who the elite want to steer.
Oh, oh absolutely, I, I'll tell you what, my phone number's 936-672-7716, I'm accessible by anybody, anybody can call me. And I'll tell you that why I said that, I said it because you need to talk to these people. When you read the newspaper, you're reading one side of something, when you, when you read somebody's platform or, you know, they're pandering, go visit with the guy, look him in the eye, or, or the woman, look them in the eye, find out where their heart is. Don't get caught up in everything that you read, don't get caught up in it, go visit with the person, understand, let them explain to you why. Sometimes, you know, we have all these bloggers out here in Montgomery County, I call them the radical rights, but, I mean, they just, that they, they just spew all this stuff out there, and half of it makes sense, but it's their delivery on it that just, that causes big waves.
Well, it's venomous and it's vile, and they could have three quarters, they could be three quarters correct in what they're saying, but that other quarter lie, that other quarter pandering, you know, false, it takes it all away.
Yeah, because the, the truth, it doesn't get them enough ratings, or it doesn't get them enough people following. Look, there's ways to fix things, and we have some, Montgomery County is the 15th largest growing city in the nation, I'm, I'm sorry, Conroe is the 15th largest growing city in the nation.
Yeah.
Montgomery County is like number five or six, I think, in the nation, but.
Yeah, different numbers rated, five, six or seven, so bottom line is, that's pretty freaking strong.
We're, we're growing at a massive rate, we've gotta make some major decisions now, but get out there and visit with your, with your elected officials, don't just take the word of, of, of somebody that's writing an article as the truth, get in there and know it for yourself, make your own mind up.
Watch, watch that person when they get in office, watch how they vote.
Yeah, absolutely.
City of Conroe's got a great opportunity, go to the workshop on Wednesday, go to city council on Thursday. You say, well, I can't go, okay, don't go. Watch it live from your desk if you can, on, on, on Conroe City TV. I, I'm busy, I can't, I'm out in the field. Okay, then at night, or the next day, watch the archive, and do the same for the county.
You bet.
Watch what, you know what, Dwayne, I'm gonna use you an example, watch what he says, and if he says something up there on, on, you say something up there Wednesday and Thursday that is not what you said, then now I need to hold you accountable. Now, holding you accountable doesn't mean screaming on Facebook, Dwayne Ham's a liar, no, it means contacting you, it means seven to sit down with you, maybe it does mean Facebook sending you a message and saying, dude, but, but it doesn't mean just screaming, okay? You're not perfect, I bet you're gonna make some mistakes in your life, I bet you've made a few, and so will I. But if we don't hold you accountable in a professional manner.
Yeah.
Then you know what dude, I wouldn't listen to me, I wouldn't.
Yeah.
If I start screaming at you, I would just click goodbye.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, and ladies and gentlemen, I will tell you that, you know, it's one thing to campaign, it's another thing when you get in the thick of it, and, and trust me, not enough goes my way. But it, it's all about trying to move people in the direction that's best for Montgomery County, and everybody, in, in Conroe, and everybody may have a different idea of, of what's best, but come together, work together, get it done, because obviously, if you're upset about it and you're blogging about it, you love Montgomery County, so let's see what we can do, and you love Conroe, what can we do to fix the problem? And that's what our politicians and our elected officials should do. They're about, they should be about solving problems that are best for the citizens.
Well, and that's where too, not everything rolls over, but there's certain issues that are with the county and the city that lap, overlap. And so the county needs to, to worry about some of the city stuff, and the city needs, because, because we do, we overlap certain, certain types of services and, and things. So, now getting back to, to city council, so far this year, what would you say, because you, you're coming up on your one year anniversary as a councilman.
Absolutely.
And nobody's lynched you yet, that I know of, right?
No.
Okay, you haven't come up missing, I haven't heard of any major scandals, so you must be doing a good job, I hope, it, it seems like that. I think all the councilmen, as a group, and the city's doing good. Can you guys do better? Probably so. So that being said, tell me what you wish to work on going forward.
Well, I gotta, I have to tell you.
As yourself or as the council?
Well, I can only speak for myself, but I have to tell you, we have a great council, we really do. You know, Seth Gibson and Guy Martin, Gil Snyder, Duke Coon, our mayor pro temp, great guys, great guys, and they work really hard. And, and I'm super proud of them. But, you know, we, we're, we're coming up on our budget this year, we're gonna start, and I gotta tell you, I'm hoping we can find some tax cuts in there, I'm hoping we can give some relief to our citizens. I know we're moving in the right direction of doing some things, and there's gonna be some changes that we need to make up there, but, you know, it's gonna take a lot of us brainstorming and coming together to make some, some good things happen. We cut, we cut everybody's water bill by, I, I, I think 10% last year. Hopefully we can do that again this year, another 10 cents, I shouldn't say 10 cents, we, we cut 10 cents off last year, we're gonna take another 10, I hope, this year, excuse me. And hopefully we're gonna find some good tax cuts for the citizens and, and, and cut out any wasteful spending.
Well, I'll tell you this.
We run a pretty tight budget, yeah.
I need you to, you, you know where I live, you've, you've driven by my house before.
Yeah.
Drive by my front yard.
Yeah.
Not because I'm a cheapskate, I am, but the front yard is nasty, because I just, dude.
Can't afford a water.
When I go to watering it, I used to have the most beautiful yard around. I'll show you pictures from my house, well, mainly in Florida, and Florida was hotter and I didn't have any big trees. And I don't know what it was, man, but my water bill never touched me, but now, God in heaven, and I'm just a mile from downtown.
Sure.
So, I mean, keep fighting dude, I need you to fight, I need you to fight.
We are, we, we are, we are not gonna back up on this, it, it is a, we've been sold a bill of goods that wasn't exactly the truth. And the truth is gonna come out, and, and, you know, we, we are tied up fighting this every day, and it's a promise I made and I'm proud to keep, I, I'm proud to keep this promise. And I, I think, you know, going back to our elected officials, I think that the, the citizens need to say, hey, look, I may not like what he said, but he made a promise that he was gonna do this, and I think every person that's elected that runs on a promise should have to keep that promise. And, and, and I'm, I'm proud to say that I've kept my promises, I'm, I'm fighting with everything I have, and so I don't think anybody can take that away from them, so.
Well, we'll be taking a break here in a second, it's our mid hour break, and when we come back, what I'd like to touch on is a little bit about the open house tomorrow night, because that's a big thing for the city. I know that you're a big supporter, I know Duke Coon's a big supporter, I'm sure the rest of the men are as well, I haven't had a chance to speak to them directly, but I know that Victoria's been working on this like for four years. I talked to her over three years ago before it was even, when it was just TV, and we talked about her, she talked about me just bringing her one show a month. Nathan, can you videotape one hour, one time a month? Because you're out in the community and we want to bring something about the community to the people. We'd like to bring something about events, we'd like you to, to interview some businesses. And that's just what this morphed into, but hopefully on a huge scale, and then nobody knows about the emergency broadcast alert system and what that means to the citizens of Conroe, and ultimately, the citizens of Montgomery County because of TV, because of internet, podcasts and YouTube.
Yeah, absolutely.
Dude, it's huge. I think if people knew how big it was, we would need to rent the sixth floor for this grand opening. I mean, I'm serious.
Absolutely. We, we, I mean, everybody and anybody should be down here at this deal tomorrow. I mean, it's, it's, this is the, this is the coolest thing since the flipside of a pillow. That's an old saying that I.
Lord have mercy. All right, folks, on that note, flipside of a pillow, Nathan Arazot of Montgomery County Lifestyle, I got City Councilman Dwayne Ham, I told you it would be fun, I told you it'd be zany, but we're being serious about serious things too. So we're gonna take a break, go get some more coffee, tea, whatever, we'll be right back.
Lone Star Community Radio is looking for those who are interested in hosting their own talk show, with monthly and weekly slots available on Conroe's FM 104.5 106.1 and on IRloneStar.com. Start your own podcast, create your first YouTube channel and be on TV. Contact Lone Star Community Radio online at IRloneStar.com or call the station message line at 936-647-3776 to take your first step into the radio world.
I'm typing, I'm dancing, I'm dancing, I'm typing. Alrighty then, welcome back folks, it's after the hour. Dwayne just asked me, you been drinking? No sir, no sir, I'm just crazy. Hey, hello Fallon Weisner, hello Fallon Weisner, dude, Fallon sent us a message, she's tuning in, she's listening, didn't you want to invite her and her sister Lauren somewhere?
I do man, y'all need to come out, June 1st on Thursday to Wolfies on Lake Conroe, I'm having a fundraiser out there, I'm having the Ricky's play.
Dude, I went online and saw them.
70s, 80s and 90s rock and roll, they're gonna get it done. So it's gonna be a lot of fun, we're having all you can eat crawfish while it lasts, from 6:30 to, till, till it's gone, I think it's $30 a ticket, but man.
Dude, for all you can eat crawfish, and if you don't eat crawfish, it's all you can eat chicken tenders and stuff like that, and french fries, but you just get to socialize. My understanding is you're gonna talk a little bit.
Just a little bit.
About water and what you've achieved and what you want to do, and you're gonna ask for people to, to rally around you and to give you support, and to hold you accountable.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we're gonna party.
That's what we're gonna do.
We're gonna, we're gonna dance to the Ricky's. Dude, I went online, in fact, I'll post their little video, it's like an eight minute of all the stuff they do.
Yeah.
Dude, they throw down.
Yeah.
70s, 80s, 90s, 60s, a little bit, I, I, there was something, little 60s in there too.
Yeah. Well Nathan, you, you've been, you've been to my events, and I try to do it different than the rest of the elected officials, which is fine, I mean, they're doing a great job, don't get me wrong, but, man, everybody goes to these things, and, and I try to do something that's fun. I always, I try to give back to the community and, and also, you know, fundraise at the same time, but I want everybody to have a good time, have a smile on their face, and I want everybody to leave going, wow, Dwayne Ham's events are a blast. And, and so far, I think we've done that, I've always had music at my events, and, and, so anyway, I would encourage everybody to come out, even if you're not involved in politics at all, come out, have a good time, eat crawfish, everybody loves crawfish, and if you don't, we'll have some chicken tenders for you.
Yeah, so Fallon, let us know. I'm calling her out, but maybe she like, Fallon of Weisner Buick, okay, see, so now, I threw in Weisner Buick, so I've promoted them, so now she'll like being called out.
Is she gonna donate a car, is that what you said?
No. I think if, hey, let me tell you what, Fallon and Lauren were on my show.
Yeah.
They are not only beautiful young women, they are smart, intelligent business women, and it is cool to listen to them talk, and it is cool to listen to them talk about their legacy, their tradition, but they love their employees, and they love this community.
Yeah, that's cool.
And so that's cool.
Yeah.
So we need Fallon and Lauren to grab your posse and head out that way.
Man, I look forward to getting to know them.
Yep, yep.
That's cool, I hear you talk about them all the time, how great they are, and I, I, I feel embarrassed that I don't know them, so.
Well, here's what's funny, is Friday, the studio will be closed down, so I don't have a show Friday. I tell you how much I've, I've respected getting to know them and how much I want to get to know them better. The replay show on Friday is our hour we spent with Fallon and Lauren to talk about Weisner.
Oh wow.
Yeah, there's a replay, and I pick, when you have a replay, you gotta pick something you think the people are really gonna want, because you don't want to offend anybody. That's how popular their show was, that's how popular they were.
Mr. Weisner was such a great man in the community and gave a lot back to the community, and, man, I, I tell you what, I, I look forward to getting to know them. I, I feel like I kinda already know them through you though.
Well, I hope they show tomorrow night too, for the grand opening here at, at the studio, Thursday night, 5 to 7.
Yeah, that'll be neat.
I keep plugging that, don't I?
Oh hey, what a great event though, of something that is for our community, that just continues, you know, we, I, I don't know if the right word is that the, that the city partnered with, with y'all over here, or what the right word is, but I can tell you that the city is behind this 100%, and because in the event of a storm, a hurricane, or something bad, we can get the message out through, through, through Lone Star here, and we're excited about Lone Star Radio doing this and helping us out, because y'all are helping us out.
So let me tell you, let me read for you the official communication from the City of Conroe, bear with me folks. "The partnership between Lone Star Community Radio and the City of Conroe was developed to provide the citizens with hyper-local community programming 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, as well as an emergency alert system that will help connect citizens directly with the City of Conroe's emergency management team in the event of emergency. This partnership will also produce quality programming for the City of Conroe's already blossoming local TV channel called Our City TV. Beyond the practical reasons for having locally produced programming, Lone Star Community Radio helps to create the kind of strong community identity that is so attractive to young families and potential businesses, programming which also celebrates." that is so attractive to young families and potential businesses, programming which also celebrates our dynamic city." And that's from Victoria Enzley, the communications director. That last sentence, young families and, and businesses that are thinking of coming here.
You bet.
That is why this partnership is here. It's not about me, I'm so blessed and so excited to have a station, a, a show, but I gotta bring the community what you as a, as a leader and as the community wants, otherwise, why be here?
Man, Victoria is such a great asset that we have at the city as well, you know, a, as well as you are Nathan, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to take anything from you, but man, this guy is everywhere.
No, dude.
Have you ever walked to a place and not ran into Nathan?
Yes.
Well, I, I didn't even know that, that one man could be three people, I mean, I mean, he's, he's Boudreaux and Bou- Boudroette, is that how you pronounce the female?
Budrina.
Budrina, Budrina.
And then there's Frojo, hey folks, I gotta say, thank you, no really, thank you so much for those kind words, but I, but, in the same breadth of how you know what you're saying, it's the hundred people behind me and beside me that make me get to be out there. Yes, I love it, yes, it's fun, yes, I get to reap the rewards. But it's the right thing to do if that's the gift that God gave me to use. And that's why I do it.
I think God gave you a gift of making people smile. I mean, you know as well as I do, I mean, you're at, at, at all these events and, and, yeah, it's, it's, it's not political, but it gets political sometimes even when you don't want it, but you can't hardly run into you without putting a smile on your face and, 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 you know, and Boudreaux. Who can't smile at Boudreaux?
Dude, I got pictures of a friend of mine, City Councilman, wearing, wearing some Boudreaux hair at a catfish festival a couple of years back. I, I think I deleted that, those pictures and videos, but I don't know, I may not have.
Man, that was, that was good stuff.
That was stuff. Hey, listen, thank you so much and this, this is what's fun about it and this is what's fun about a city that's not stuck on themselves or leaders that aren't stuck on themselves, is it is supposed to be fun, especially in today's climate. Look at what just happened in England. Look, not doom and gloom, but it could happen here, it could happen at, at the Metro Bay and it could happen at a parade. Uh, thank God we've got incredible law enforcement in America, but here in Montgomery County and here in the city of Conroe. But that's why we have to be lighthearted.
Oh, you bet and I, I have to tell you, man, I'm so proud of Conroe PD. Uh, Chief DePoy over there and his, all his team do a great job of protecting the citizens of Conroe. And I, and, and I couldn't be prouder and, and I have to tell you, our Conroe Fire Department.
Whoa.
I mean, just.
Yep.
Another, another great, we have so many great things going on in the city of Conroe that, uh, that, that the people are well-served and we're gonna continue to serve those people as best we can. But, but two great agencies and then our, our city staff, our Public Works Department, our Engineering Department. All of those guys do such a great job, uh, you know, our Parks Department. I mean, I, I can't name every department that we have in the city of Conroe, but I can tell you that they, these guys come to work, got, men and women, come to work every day fired up and wanna work for the citizens. And, and that makes my job a lot easier and, 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 and it just puts a smile on my face when I see the good work that they do.
North San Jacinto, between my house and here, I came here, they've been working off and on the past week on that street. When I pulled up, they stopped, they waved me through and I said, no, that's okay, cause I thought they needed to go and they said they smiled and then they waved, no, that's okay. And it was five guys.
Yeah.
Couple of them on the feet, couple of them on some heavy equipment. And when I went by, I waved and every one of them waved back to me. They didn't have to do that.
Yeah, yeah. They, uh, I, I tell you, yesterday I was out at the, at the Public Works, this is National Public Works Week. So our Public Works had a big event out there and, uh, what a great event out there. I mean, it just, I have to tell you, I, i- if you got to work every day with the, with the people that work for the people of Conroe, it's great. Man, these people are just super people, Nancy McKeska over there, what a great lady. I tell you, she never says no. I mean, I can ask her.
She's always out and about, representing the city.
Hey, when, when these roads are blocked off and we have events and parades, she's the one that gets it done. Our permit department, I mean, this is how the, this is how development happens in, in Conroe. It's because of our permit department, our water department, but, you know, doing what they do over there. I mean, we have a great staff at the city of Conroe and I, I tell you, I couldn't be more blessed.
A lot of people don't know it, but back in, what was it, May, when we had like a week where half the city was out of power and trees were down? Now, if other people were out and about, please don't take offense, I don't mention your name, I don't know you, I didn't know it. But Duke Coon was out riding around making phone calls, back to who? Back to Nancy McKeska. Nancy was out and about, they were coordinating and she was coordinating to send, you know, this and this and this. And I know that meant a lot of other people were out there, I just don't know their names.
Yeah.
So it wasn't just sit back and saying, okay, all you heads of your departments, y'all go work and let me know what's going on. They were out in the field.
I tell you, Duke Coon is, is, is an amazing guy, that he is out in the community and out working for the citizens. I mean, that, that, that's a guy that is elected to work for the people and he takes it serious and, and I admire him for it.
One of the things that we were talking about and I, and I wanna go back to is the, um, is the event for tomorrow night. Um, and what do you want the people who show up to learn?
I want the people that show up to know that this is their radio station. Because it's here for them and to tune in and learn and, and listen. And there, there's so many different shows that I, I talk to people all the time that say, man, I love that show, I, I go over here and I listen to this show and then, you know, a little later they listen to this show, but this is for them. This, this station is for the people. And so come down and enjoy it, meet all the people down here, come enjoy yourself, eat some cookies, drink some coffee. I don't know what all y'all are gonna have, but it's gonna be a blast.
Well, it's just gonna be some sweet treats, coffee, iced tea and water next door. And it's probably gonna be, it's probably gonna be overflowing, it's probably gonna be out in the streets, probably gonna be walking around. But it's a chance for people to meet each other, to talk to some of the talk show hosts, some of the DJs, Jake, Dick. And just to get some information, it's, it's, it's just a chance to, it's a teaser, we won't get a chance to talk to everybody. Um, and, and it's not for me or any of the other talk show hosts to hard sell our show. We all need sponsors, that's what keeps it going. But this isn't about hard selling somebody, this is about just having fun, giving you some basic information and then we can follow up and get more information down the road.
How cool is that though, I don't know if I can say it, sweet treats, meet and greet.
There you go, it's a sweet treats, meet and greet. Oh dude, you know we're gonna do a video when this is over with, right? You know we're doing a video when this is done.
Say it real fast, three times.
Okay, Jake, turn.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I don't know if I was ever just naive when I was younger, but I lived, I grew up in Katy from, we moved here when I was four years old and from the time, and I lived there until I was 19 and I just never really realized, I never felt the, the sense of community like I've felt since I've been here for two months now and I, I'm already looking to move here and I've, I've just gotta say that I never knew that Conroe was like this until I actually discovered this radio station. And I gotta say, I've loved every moment of, of working here and being here and, and Dick is wonderful and, and he's 100% right that, you know, look guys, we want this to be as satisfactory to you guys, to our listeners. And so, you know, reach out to us, give us your opinions, let us know what you think and we wanna make this the best possible radio station for you, the city of Conroe.
Yeah, don't make us do a PBS telethon for sponsors either, dude. Cause I'll go 24/7, man, I'll get up on a billboard somewhere and make the fire department come get me down, you know? Hey, but real quick, before we take a break, that's Jake the intern, Jake lives in Cold Springs?
Cold Springs.
Okay, check it out.
What a great place too.
He's going to college for broadcast and for, for this type of thing, but guess what?
Eat him up, cats.
He reached up, he reached out to a few radio stations, wouldn't give him the time of day, wouldn't even acknowledge anything.
Really?
He's an intern, he's a non-paid intern right now and he is, is helping us. He has helped with some of the graphics, he's helped with timing, he's given me feedback. And I'm listening, cause he's going to college for this, I don't know it all, he's giving feedback and he's giving feedback to other people.
Their loss, our gain.
Well, if it wasn't for this community radio station.
Yeah.
What would he be doing?
Yeah.
That's a huge win right there.
You bet, you bet.
He ain't real handsome, but he's fun.
Well, you know, he's gonna be here tomorrow night for the sweet treats, meet and greet.
He's got a face for radio.
That's right, my mom keeps reminding me.
Hey folks, you're listening to Montgomery County Lifestyle with Nathan Arizona, my guest, City Councilman Dwayne Ham and Jake the intern. We're gonna take a quick break and when we come back, we're gonna dive into a little bit more meat and potatoes about, uh, Dwayne and City Council. And then we'll leave you on a light note, we'll be right back.
Lone Star Community Radio is Montgomery County's radio station with talk, music, weather and traffic for Montgomery County. Have a question or comment about one of our shows, wanna know how to reach a host? Just contact the station at irlonestar.com or call in and leave a message at 936-647-3776. Get involved with your community with Lone Star Community Radio.
All right, folks, Montgomery County Lifestyle with Nathan Arizona. Councilman D- uh, Dwayne Ham here with me. We're keeping it lighthearted, Fallon, oh my God, yeah, she's my new buddy, man, she's awesome. Just want you guys to know, you wanna know if you should support radio here? It looks like Weisner Buick, Hyundai, GMC, whatever other 17 names they have are listening to Montgomery County Lifestyle with Nathan Arizona. They're probably listening to Lone Star Community Radio and Dwayne Ham, but I'm gonna take credit for it right now.
Absolutely.
Cause I can. No, but, so she just told me that she loves crawfish and she said, we have fantastic rhyming skills. So we're rhyming, sweet treats, meet and greet, sweet treats, meet and greet, sweet treats, meet and greet. Okay Fallon, you need to come down here tomorrow night and we're gonna have you in front of everybody, oh, she sang on my show.
She did?
That's why we call her the singing sister.
Oh, wow.
I don't mean like Catholic nun.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't think she's a Catholic nun. She could be though, I don't know, no, I don't think so.
Are you sure?
I know, so, they don't make them like that. She's singing, so she wants me to remind y'all about the fantastic macaroons next door at Conroe Coffee. See, she wants to give back to the community, she wants to give them a plug.
Wow, what an awesome one.
I know, maybe she wants to come get a free macaroon tomorrow night, that's probably what it is.
What is a macaroon?
You'll have to come tomorrow night and find out. We'll get Fallon to get you one.
I can't wait to try it.
They're delicious.
I can't wait to try a macaroon.
Macaroon. All right, folks, so here, here, here's what I wanna talk about. What's next? What's on the agenda for City Council as a whole and for Dwayne? We know the water fight, but is there something else going on, is there something else you guys are gearing for, maybe not, I don't know.
Well, we have a lot of things that we're gearing up for, we're coming into our budget season, but we have a, we, we, we have a lot of great things fixing to happen. We have a new, and I hate to talk about this on the radio, but we have a new wastewater treatment plant that's gonna continue to serve the citizens of Conroe, you know.
We have another peanut, we have a peanut butter station that's gonna be.
Peanut butter station.
You never heard that? As a kid, we called it a peanut butter factory.
Oh my goodness, ugh. But we have a great new plant that we're fixing to put in, it's gonna be great, it's gonna serve our citizens for many, many, many years. Uh, because of the rapid growth that we're having out here, but let me just talk about the development that's going on around, uh, Conroe. I mean, we have the new Johnson development here that, that, that's going in, that the old camp strike. Uh, it's gonna be a lot of great homes in there, uh, it's, it's really, really nice and a master plan community. At 8:30, um, you know, before long, we're gonna have, uh, the, the Woodlands Development Group down there bought 2,000 acres out there, they're gonna do. So the growth to Montgomery County into the city of Conroe is just amazing what's happening. We're having to widen so many roads now and, 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 because we have the growth and we wanna stay in front of that and we wanna, you know, earlier you talked about partnering with the county and, and, and doing things, we, we do, we do work with the county in, in, in a lot of ways. And we're just trying to, to look out 10 years, 20 years and see where we're, so we're in front of it, so it's great. But we're, we're gonna make sure everybody has a great lifestyle here.
And I'm gonna hit on that.
What's important.
I was at Commissioner Metter's breakfast last week.
Uh huh.
And Danielle Shiner of the Economic Development Council was there. And unfortunately, they didn't have her projector for her, so she had to wing it off the notes and she did a great job. Talking about some boring numbers, I mean, because when you're just sitting there listening, they're boring. But if you really try to pay attention, and I did, here's one thing that struck me that I, it was one of my takeaways. You know how we talk about the Economic Development Council, the CVB, the Chamber, you guys, other businesses bringing in businesses and that's what we need to do is bring them in? Okay, we do, what about retention? Okay? As much as we might be seducing companies to come buy land cheap, give them some tax abatements if they give us, you know, dollar amounts. Two things on that, the tax abatements, these companies have to, they have to prove X amount of average dollar salaries, hourly wages, salaries.
Sure.
And then retroactive after they've proven it, then you give them that money. You don't just wipe the slate clean and say, hey, you don't do anything up front, they gotta prove it up front.
Oh no, there's a lot of accountability in that and, and there was a company, I'm not gonna name them, that, 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 uh, we had, that, we, again, the county um, said, no more. And the city said, no more.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I kinda have a rule of thumb for me and I'm just speaking for Dwayne Ham. If, I, I'm not gonna give a tax abatement, I'm not gonna vote for a tax abatement for a company that, that, that is doing minimum wage. Well, it's just, it, it's, we, we need our citizens to be able to buy homes and, uh, and yeah, we want them here. But we want them to be active members of the community and, and if they're just scraping by, that, that's no fun for anybody. And why should the, why should the guy that owns the company get a tax abatement when he's not taking care of his employees? That's kinda how I look at it, so.
Well, and here's what she tapped, hit on next that really stood out with me. Some of these companies, one of them in Houston had to lay off a bunch of people and shut down some plants. So what did we do? We really made sure that they loved being up here and that company moved their remaining people up here. So instead of closing Conroe down and moving everybody down there, they saw the positives of the community to move their people up here. So you also have to give a good quality of life to those families and those singles that say, I don't wanna move. And God forbid they're laid off, they don't leave, they look for a job here and hopefully those companies and those small businesses flourish. Cause small businesses run this country, yes or no?
Absolutely.
So you're not only trying to seduce the big boys, you want the mom and pop operations to be successful.
The mom and pops actually drive more than the big companies do, that, the, I don't know, it's, it's bad, but the big companies, they always have 150 different loopholes they can crawl through and get, you know. And, but mom and pops are the backbone of this country, you and I both know that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not gonna go into my, usually for the last couple of minutes, I talk about stuff, folks, I'm gonna talk more about it tomorrow. Try to go downtown Friday, 9 o'clock in the morning, but I wanna leave it with Dwayne, Dwayne, you got a minute, minute and a half. What do you want us to take away from, from this time with you, uh, before I get you on the show again?
Well, folks, it's my privilege to serve you and, and that's what I'm here to do, is to serve you. And I, and I hope that if, if, that people will contact me if they need something, cause that's my job, is to serve the citizens of Conroe. And if you'll call me at any time, I, I'm easily accessible, you can call City Hall and ask them to put you through or leave me a message and I, I, I promise you, I will call you back. It may not be immediately, but I will call you back, but I'm here to serve y'all and if there's something I can do to help y'all or something that you think we ought to be working on, please contact me and please contact your other, uh, city councilmen. But we're here to serve at the pleasure of y'all and, and I promise you and I give you my word, I will work tirelessly to satisfy y'all. And I can't make everybody happy, but I can at least explain to you why. If, 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 if we don't, if, if we don't come out of something, but, but I'm here to work for y'all, so. And I appreciate y'all and thank y'all for having me out here today.
Absolutely, folks, just so you know, and Dwayne, we've talked, I've talked to Duke and, and, and Victoria. One of the things that Montgomery County Lifestyle is gonna start doing here, Montgomery County Lifestyle, Nathan Arizona, the radio show, is we're looking at hopefully maybe having some different days and times in the future, but right now, we're gonna start getting consistent on a, on a specific date and time to have commissioners' corner. I wanna have each one of y'all on, at least offer it out to each one of you. I wanna have the mayor's minutes type of thing, I wanna have commissioners' corner, I want the commissioners on here, each one, doesn't matter who they are, where they're from. I wanna have, that's what I said, the city council, the councilman's corner, commissioners' corner, mayor's minutes, county judge, and then law enforcement. I wanna have law enforcement time, because that is the community and that's my responsibility. If I say that I give back to the community and I'm about the community, that's what I'm gonna do. So take it back to your men, take it back and let them know, the other thing I'm gonna challenge you with is I wanna have supervisors on here. I wanna have some of the workers, I know you gotta be careful what you say, this and that, I get that. But let's, let's figure out a way to give some love to some of those people down the road.
Yeah, those department heads, man, they work so hard, yeah, yeah.
Sound good?
Sounds awesome.
Awesome. All right, folks, you've been listening to Montgomery County Lifestyle with Nathan Arizona, my guest, City Councilman Dwayne Ham. Go on a Wednesday or Thursday to a workshop, to a council, give them a call. And look, go out there and have a great day, be nice to one another, be here tomorrow night from 5 to 7 for our open house with the city. And get more information about all of our shows, not just my show, the music and talk shows. And I'll see you tomorrow at 11 o'clock. Nathan Arizona, Montgomery County Lifestyle, and I'm reminding you that this is your county, your life, so go out and live it with style.
Thanks for checking out this podcast of Lone Star Community Radio, Montgomery County's community radio station. If you enjoyed this recording, make sure to check out our past shows online at irlonestar.com or their respective video or podcast formats on YouTube, Google Play or iTunes. If you have any questions regarding the show, either it being about sponsorships or on YouTube, Google Play or iTunes. If you have any questions regarding the show, either it being about sponsorships or questions for the host, contact the station manager at D I C K at IRloneStar.com or call the station at 936-647-3776. This show was recorded in downtown Conroe, Texas at the Lone Star Community Radio Studio. And Lone Star Community Radio reserves all rights to this recording and images.